Call this meeting to order once again. Start by with our land acknowledgement. We'd like to begin by acknowledging the land that we got today is the land traditionally used by the Yanashanaviho, Neshoni, and Shenauta people. We acknowledge the enduring presence and deep traditional knowledge and philosophies of the indigenous peoples with whom we share this land today. Are there any declarations of a continuing interest in accordance with municipal conflict of interest? Seeing none, presentation, no presentations, but we have two delegations received, or three delegations. So I need a motion with Council of Township about Judy Graff, Kathy Harrington, and Carla Rabidou. As delegations move by, Councilor Seven seconded by Councilor Wire, all in favor, and that's carried. I'll ask Judy to come to the podium. You might have to press.
That's good.
Yeah.
Dear Council members, thank you for this time this evening. I'm here to respectfully request your crib with the place and memorial bench by the Drainage Pond near our home in honor of my late husband Terry, who died August 5th from Lou Gehrig's disease, which he had six years. This town has held a special place in his heart, and I believe this would be a meaningful tribute to his memory. Thank you again for your consideration. It is deeply appreciated by Terry and me.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm gonna ask, we have a report. I'm gonna ask the Chair of Recreation to bring that report forward.
Yeah, thank you. So that report is REC 9 2025 Memorial Bench Request. Recommendation is where stormwater management ponds were not identified as eligible locations for memorial benches in the township's memorial bench policy. And whereas a request is being submitted by Mrs. Judy Graff to place a memorial bench at the SWM pond located on Schweitzer Crescent. And whereas the Director of Public Works and the Director of Recreation have reviewed and proposed location and have no objections, therefore be it resolved that the Council of the Township of Wellsley approve the request from Mrs. Graff for the placement of a memorial bench of the SWM pond on Schweitzer Crescent, subject to compliance with all provisions of the township's memorial bench policy. Do I have a mover? Moved by Councilor Brick, seconded by Councilor Higgit. Any discussion on that?
One question for staff on this. Assuming it's gonna be approved tonight, how soon would you be able to report with us?
We'd be able to start the process tomorrow with Mrs. Graff. I had spoken to her briefly already. The minutes of this meeting don't get ratified until the September 30th meeting. For that, we can start the process as soon as tomorrow.
So chances are it will be installed before the snow blows.
Weather pending, yes, that's the intent.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Do you know, I will vote all in favor of the recommendation. Terry, do you have a listen?
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna have Kathy Harrington.
Thanks for having us this evening. I'm Carla Rabidou and Manager of Community Programs, and I oversee the Active Living Center, our seniors' active living center, which is newly at the REC Center in the Village of Wellsley, as well as the mobile one that we've been running for a couple of years. That is, was formerly at the facility on Way Police Street and in the Village of Wellsley. It is in Linwood, St. Clements, and Hawksville as well, and that's still actively going. Kathy?
Hi, thanks so much for having us. I'm Kathy Harrington, Executive Director of Community Care Concepts. So we have submitted a letter in the package. Did I just try to synthesize the information into about four slides to help you to sort of figure it out? And I think I... It's not working? Okay, so well, that's great. So, thanks. For those of you, just to provide a bit of background on community care, we're a nonprofit charitable organization, and this is our 40th year in serving our rural communities. Focus of our work is services and supports that help older adults and adults with unique needs to live independently in their home. So our services range from social and rec programs, exercise and falls prevention, dining, meals on wheels, transportation, a lot of home health programs, adult day programs, caregiver support, and navigation and referral. So right from our very active older adults to some of our more vulnerable. So we're here tonight to talk about seniors' active living centers and a bit of background on active living centers. They're funded by the Ministry for Seniors and Accessibility. They focus on social, recreational, and educational programs for older adults. And the goal is really to promote active and healthy living, engaging older adults, and learning. And in order for us to receive provincial funding, the parameters set by the province indicate that community agencies must work with their municipalities to address costs of centers through either an in-kind or a cash contribution. So we'll switch to the next. So in Wellsley Township, for the past seven years, our organization has operated a mobile active living center, offering programs in Hawksville, Linwood, St. Clements, and at the former Wellsley Community Center. So the equivalent of one day per week per center. With the development of the recreation complex, our organization along with township staff advocated to the province, and we're successful in securing funding to operate a full-time senior center at the REC complex, which is no small feat for a community this size to be funded for not one, but two centers was unheard of in the province. So we're very pleased with that decision. And the funding that the province provides to us covers essentially the staffing, program costs, and a bit of cleaning costs. So we try and blend that in. So the request that we're making is with the funding of this full-time center at the REC complex, we've done a bit of alignment with our programs in Hawksville, Linwood, and St. Clements. And what we are requesting is a total of 1.5 days of in-kind space at those three existing sites. And so what it would do is essentially move us from one day a week in those communities up to a day and a half. And it would be new expanded programs. This will support enhanced programming for seniors across the settlements in Wellsley Township. So the tentative schedule, we've reviewed it with township staff to make sure that it's feasible. It's been tentatively approved by township staff, and we also have tentative approval through our ministry partners. So they are willing to look at a realignment of the sites for a mobile program. So that is our request, and we'd be happy to answer any questions if you may have.
I think it's tremendous opportunity for the township. So I'm just wondering about the mobile unit is, like, that's... I'm just trying to figure out exactly what that is, because I don't think I've seen it. So it's a unit that goes up to the REC centers?
So what it is, is when you look at the active living center, we're gonna have someone there, nine to four, in the Village of Wellsley. This one is to reach more underserved rural communities. So when you think about no busing, transit, for people to get into the city or even into the village where that big REC center is, that we would provide it in your smaller centers. So there's one staff and some volunteers, and she, her name is Hunter at this point, and she goes to... So you would see in the schedule, so she would be in St. Clements every Monday and Wednesday morning. Then she goes to Linwood every Monday and Wednesday afternoon. And then Hawksville, say, Tuesday and Thursday morning. And then she was in the village on Tuesday and Thursday afternoon. So she runs exercises, crafts. It's mobile because it is not at one fixed address. It's not one REC center. So it's set up to help with those hamlets in smaller communities where folks are looking for socialization, education, physical fitness. We offer exercises at all of those sites, free of charge for the patrons, participants.
If I may, do you have a sense that extended hours beyond one and a half day per week? Maybe something that would be required down the line? I'm just wondering if funding could be applied for to extend those hours there as well?
So at this point, the funding that the province has given us is for that person to be at four sites for... It's, it's, it used to be four days, now we've got the funding for five. I have eleven boys and four kids and seven green kids, so I'm used to projecting. So we already have that in place that we can expand our targets. What did we say for activities across those mobile sites last year? Do you have that number there? 1,269 different programs were ran at those four sites. That's not participants. I don't have that number off the top of my head. But we, the targets that we sent to the ministry upon applying for this grant yearly, we have to go through an application process. But we've needed a permanent acquisition at CCC because we don't see why we'd be declined. Our, we're meeting all our targets plus. So if you look at a community like Hawksville, we don't, we didn't at first get a bunch of people out. So we're drawing them out with, we're partnering with the township, like in St. Clements, with your senior skate program. So we'll kind of adopt that program and those folks to bring them out to that skate, and we're gonna help either co-pay or sponsor those. We're just in discussions right now with your staff. And so the hope is if we were, say, in Hawksville, for example, for a whole day, that folks would either come in the morning or afternoon. It just offers more versatility than right now, we just have the two mornings. So that's not always great for people. So we're hoping that this half a day essentially, those three sites, Hawksville, St. Clements, and Linwood, we're asking for another half day for each of those three sites. So that would be Tuesday afternoon, Thursday afternoon, and Friday morning. What we don't want to do is any duplication. So we just want to be totally transparent and crystal clear that we know that your taxpayers across the Township of Wellsley helped build that REC center. So someone from St. Clements is absolutely welcome. We're not looking at barriers to divide your communities, we're looking at bringing them all together. So when we look at the Village of Wellsley, we've already been disseminating brochures and intros to the new staff. Nico over there, over at Pondview, and Henry Street, and some more isolated areas that they can access that and get there. But we welcome anyone across your township to come to any of those. So we have folks, quite a few, who go to Hawksville for the exercises on Tuesday. But Hawksville right now, for example, only has exercises once a week. So they'll join, head down the road to St. Clements on the Wednesday morning so that they can hit two exercises a week. So we already have people who flow to each. We have people in your town, in the Village of Wellsley, that head all the way up to our one that we run in, Wellwood, or Wellmont, because we haven't had exercises right in the village, and they prefer to have them there. So we're just really looking at, in layman's terms, to beef up what we're already doing.
Transportation, I would, I would assume a number of those individuals that will travel would have their own car. Would Kuanis stop with that, or do you...
Yes, we can arrange Kuanis. It is active living, so it is your more active older adults. 55 plus traditionally, we wouldn't tell someone at 49 they couldn't go, so I'm eligible. And it's rare that we don't have transportation. We definitely would do everything we could to make that not a barrier. So we have our own driver at CCC, we have volunteer drivers, and also have a senior support worker in Wellsley who brings people to those exercise programs. If it's a barrier, we'll try and do what we can to get you there within reason.
So any other question? Where do we go?
I do have a motion.
We have a motion.
Okay. Does the Council of the Township of Wellsley approve one and a half additional days of in-kind space to Community Care Concepts to run the senior active living center across the Township of Wellsley within township recreation facilities?
I have a mover for that, this Councilor Seven, seconded by Councilor Wire. Any further discussion? All in favor, and that's carried. You have a...
Thank you very much. That's great, thanks. So the goal is to have this ruled out for October 1st, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, I'll move to Recreation.
REC 10 2025 Recreation Advisory Committee motion. I require recommendation, whereas the Recreation Service Board at the Township of Wellsley made significant contributions to the delivery of recreation programs and services in their communities over many years. And whereas only one Recreation Service Board remains active, with another currently inactive, and the other boards and committees unofficially disbanded. And whereas the township has identified the need for a more coordinated and strategic approach to recreation planning and delivery across all communities. And whereas the establishment of a Recreation Advisory Committee will provide consistent advice to council, enhance public input, and ensure recreation services are aligned with the township's strategic priorities. And whereas the local Lions Clubs have expressed support for the establishment of such a committee. And whereas the township recognizes and respects the importance of maintaining existing Recreation Service Board funds within their respective accounts to be utilized for recreation purposes with their communities, now therefore be it resolved that the Township, that the Council of the Township of Wellsley hereby approve the disbanding of the existing Recreation Service Boards and the establishment of a Recreation Advisory Committee with the scope and structure as outlined in the staff report. And further than any funds currently held in Recreation Service Board accounts remaining in the accounts they are presently in to be utilized exclusively for recreation purposes within their respective communities. Do I have a mover? Moved by Mayor Noack, seconded by Councilor Brick. Discussion. Councilor Brick?
Yeah, so I think it got added to the Minister's just as an addendum, but Jeff Quinn from the Wellsley group did reach out and supported this, just in case I ever missed that from the Wellsley perspective. The one question that I had, and maybe around the term length for people on the board, I believe it said up to 12 years for a term length, or three, three terms of four years. I just wonder if that might be too much. Obviously, if we don't have interest, you want someone in the spot. But if you get somebody that's there for 12 years and, or eight years, and you got some fresh new faces, turning that away. So the term length was the only kind of question that I had maybe on that, so.
Councilor Seven?
So I think the idea of it is good. I think the streamlined process sounds like a positive. I think, when we had talked to Annie years and years ago about it, I, I kind of understood that it was when all of the REC service boards had disbanded or had chosen to not participate anymore. So the fact that Hawksville still has an active board, I don't know that, I don't know that it's a good idea to turn volunteers away. If they have an active board that is perfectly happy and providing their area with lots of activities, I don't know that it makes sense to disband. Could we potentially maybe have one of the REC service, Hawksville REC Service Board people sit on the advisory committee or something like that, like keep both active?
Thanks, Councilor Seven. One of the recommendations is that a member from each ward in the municipality sit on the, on the committee. So that would ensure that there would be a resident from, from Ward One on the committee. So that was the intent of the recommendation, to ensure that that does happen.
Sorry, yes, yeah, I think that's, that's great. But I think being in Hawksville is kind of its own special case where they have, they, they have a lot of people that come up for their events, and they're from Hawksville, and they seem to run very well. If you disband that REC service board and just put one person onto the advisory, and that one person says, "I want to have fireworks in July," and that goes against the other seven people or whoever on there, that could potentially mean that they don't have fireworks. And that's something that's been going on for years and years that people really appreciate. So I, from my perspective, I'm thinking it would be the best of both worlds to keep Hawksville active and have that one person sit on the advisory committee so that they can say, "Hey, we're doing this. Does anybody want to join us? Does anybody have any ideas?" But still have enough volunteers to make it work. That's just my thoughts.
Councilor Wire, you recommend that Danny present his report before we go to more discussion. He hasn't had a chance to speak to the report yet. Outline a few things.
Thanks, Rick. So for, yes, for the last number of years, as the current Recreation Service Boards began to become inactive, staff began to look at the options for the future of how these boards and committees may serve council. When we looked at the current terms of reference for the boards, the last update that could be found was done in 2003. So with the current active boards down to one, and the last update to the bylaw done in 2003, that's when it was determined that a new terms of reference and a new committee would be the recommendation. Staff started meeting with the Three Lions Clubs in the spring of 2025, when all three clubs expressed interest in having a member sit on the committee. And to inform, to ensure that all four wards were represented on top of the Three Lions members, the recommended, the recommendation is that the community member from each ward be appointed to the committee. The committee would be an advisory committee rather than a fundraising committee. The Lions Clubs, that is, their expertise is fundraising. The Paradise and District Lions Club catchment area does include Hawksville. So the opportunity does remain, there does remain an opportunity for Hawksville's fundraising opportunities to continue through the Paradise and District Lions Club. All other details are outlined in the report. One thing, we do have a, we do have a motion tonight prepared for if council would like to see the Hawksville REC Service Board remain inactive for one year till the end of December of 2026, to give them an opportunity to get through their 2026 planned events, and to give the new Recreation Advisory Committee an opportunity to see what that board looks like and what they do in their community.
Councilor Higgit?
I agree with Councilor Seven. If you have a group of volunteers, why would you want to get rid of them? I just wonder in Hawksville, they, they do a lot of fundraising. You take that away, how are they, who's gonna be planning? I think it was mentioned in their letter, who's gonna plan fundraising? You're basically still gonna have the same group of people, but they don't get the recognition of being on the service board. Just last month, we talked about why sports groups are leaving our community to rent from other facilities in our neighboring municipalities, and one of the reasons was the cost, and it was because they use volunteers. But yet here we are, pushing away our volunteers.
Just a little extra information if I could. So the, the current bylaw, we don't actually even have terms of reference for the REC service boards. Current bylaw, we've discovered, is from 2003. And it outlines that the REC service boards will be a service board to council, basically taking over operation of the facilities in those communities. That, over the years, has evolved. Even when I started here in 2008, that's not the way it was being operated already. Basically, for lack of a better term, the current Hawksville REC Service Board is acting, in my opinion, more as a social and fundraising committee, which is fantastic. Like Councilor Higgit said, we want volunteers in our communities. I think Danny's proposal to, as he mentioned, of allowing the REC Service Board to continue for another year under the current method of operation, which is very far from what the actual bylaw says. I think that would be fantastic for them to be able to continue to offer those programs and continue their fundraising, and give that time period for, for the current board to work either with council or with the new REC Service Advisory Committee, or even with the Lions Clubs, to determine what's the best way forward to still be able to continue offering those fundraising opportunities and those social events within each of the communities, not just in Hawksville. It's how can we expand on that piece? So I don't think there's any problem at all with keeping the volunteers going in Hawksville. I think it's actually exactly what we want. It's a matter of if we have to change what that structure looks like if we're going to keep it going. Because currently, under the name of the REC Service Board, it is not following at all what the bylaw actually says. So we do need to make a change. The question is, what, does council want that change to look like?
Is there any?
So it's a question of mine. So if the service board is established, there still could be volunteers in a particular community, whether it's Hawksville or any of the four communities, that would still do some fundraising. And that money could still be earmarked for that community. Is that correct?
That, that would be correct.
So it's not that the money goes into a big pot and the seven members of the board decide some goes here and some goes there. So it's still, they still have that economy to manage their own account, so to speak, if I understand correctly.
So that would be, currently that is happening through the Lions Clubs in, in the other communities. Hawksville's the only active Recreation Service Board that we have left. There still is money in the accounts of the previous REC service boards, and that's why it's where the recommendation is for that money to stay there. But the fundraising efforts currently happening in those communities outside of Hawksville are done through the Lions Club.
I'd say, yeah.
If I can just add to that, the, the money that's in those accounts right now is controlled by council, not by the REC service boards. Council has to make the determination of where the money goes, where it's spent on.
Thank you, Councilor Brick.
Yeah, so I mean, I think I echo, you never want to lose volunteers. But I wonder if there's an opportunity for the, the Hawksville Service Board to remain on something similar to, like, could they be an affiliated group, similar to the Lions Club, or a committee of council, similar to like the Apple Butter and Cheese Festival? Is there ways to keep that autonomy and keep that fundraising with, like, I, I think the direction of the REC Services Board that is laid out here is, is good and will benefit recreation on a whole. But I think the biggest thing is we just can't lose sight of the Hawksville group and, and the contributions there. So I don't know as a committee of council or an affiliated group if there's opportunities for them to continue and still support the community as well as this recreational group.
Councilor Higgit?
Rick, can you repeat what the bylaw currently states for this?
So Cold notes the, the bylaw currently states that the, the REC Services Boards in each of the four wards would act as boards of council, operating recreation facilities in those, in those settlement areas and in those four wards. That's Cold's notes version of it. And I don't know if that even happened in 2003 when the bylaw was created, but I know in 2008 it wasn't operated that way, right? It was the Director of Recreation that was looking after the facilities and the rentals and things like that. But the, the bylaw, originally it was passed in 2002 with a revision that came in 2003 that said that it would be a service board for the municipality.
I thought that something got updated when the booking, central booking came in. I thought something was updated as far as that.
Okay, we haven't found that document. We can take a look for that. Any idea when that was?
It was shortly after, around 2006. It was around the time that I first got on council, that, that central booking kind of came into play.
Again, we'll take another look and dive a little deeper again. Yeah, we've been trying to search for the documents, we haven't found any. Danny's got something to add?
Yeah, and I can confirm that was the practice from 2006 on. But we just couldn't find any documentation in, in any reports or, or any bylaws.
Yeah, yeah. Councilor Higgit, to do one more thing, and then Bob, I, I know you had your hand up. I, I will, I will circle back to you yet.
One of the comments from the St. Clements former board members was that they tried to operate, or I'm not sure you consider operating, but any suggestions they came up with usually got turned down or it was difficult to get things done. And the other comment, it says in your report, Danny, about the voting members. I just wonder if you have one vote from Hawksville, and possibly two with the Lions Club. And where are they gonna be voting on if Hawksville wants a new playground? Is this committee gonna be voting? Because it seems like it'll be, you're, you're always gonna be outnumbered.
Yeah, and I can, and can answer to that. The, it truly is an advisory committee. Council would always... Council would always make the final decision on the recommendations. I'd like to think that in a community, a community like we live in, that if there is a strong voice for a community, uh, a community from somebody sitting on the board, that if it's a valid project, if it's a project that's going to be for the betterment of the community, at minimum, the, the request would come to council through that board. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be shot down at an advisory committee level. Uh, but at the end of the day, council does have the final say on all of the advisory committee recommendations. And that, that, the hope would be that would ensure that that continues to happen.
Okay, thanks. I just, my concern would be that if it gets voted down at the committee, that it doesn't make it to council, that's all.
Uh, Bob, please go ahead.
Yes, good evening, everybody. Thanks for allowing me into the meeting tonight. Um, I really appreciate the dialogue from everybody around this. Obviously, this is a passionate, um, thing for, for the residents of Hawksville. Uh, we're a very active and engaged community, and we really pride ourselves in our events and our volunteerism in the community. Um, so thank you for everybody who's giving, uh, who's speaking to them this evening. It's very much appreciated. Um, there's a, a couple questions I have, I think. The document I submitted with the twelve questions, some of those have already been addressed in some manner or another from your discussion. Um, one that I wasn't sure of, I know that the current, uh, the current fundraising money in the accounts will stay in those communities, which is great. I wasn't clear on what would happen after the fact. Uh, looking at the document in section four, implementation phase two, it does say that finance staff would set up a new account for all future funds raised through the newly appointed committee. Is that accurate or is that subject to change to keep those funds within the community still?
Uh, thanks for the question, Bob. Uh, the new account that's spoken to in there would generally be for any expenses related to the committee. The committee, the committee would not, the intent of the committee is not to be a fundraising committee. So that's where the fundraising dollars would stay in the accounts of the, that they're, that they're currently in. And then going forward, the intent of the report is that the Lions Clubs would take on the fundraising activities like they are in the other communities with the potential of Hawksville, that, like I said, the catchment area of the Paradise and District Lions Club does reach into Hawksville. So that was the intent of the report. Uh, I am, like I said, I'm very open to the discussion from council on how, if, if, uh, there is an opportunity for the Hawksville Board to remain, we would have to, as Rick alluded to, we would have to change the terms of reference for the Hawksville Board. We would have to figure out how the, if they'd be an affiliated group or if they'd be a committee of council, how insurance would work. Uh, there'd be, some details would have to be worked out if that's the direction council would like to take.
You have a comment?
Um, may I continue? So I, I'm a, I'm a big believer of, you know, if anything, don't fix it, the old saying. Um, currently it seems like things are going quite well in Hawksville on the fundraising side. Um, we get a lot of engagement in our events. I know that, um, Danny mentioned that the Lions Club may then take over that fundraising initiative within this community. Maybe that could be a good thing, I don't know. Um, you know, full transparency, I don't recall ever seeing any of the Lions out at any of our events. Maybe they have been there and just haven't identified themselves, I'm not sure. Um, but I've just, I'm a little hesitant on if that would be a positive change or what that would actually look like. Um, so I think that, again, the way things are going seem to be working very well. And it would be our preference certainly to continue with that if possible. And I, I should add, um, we'd be happy to welcome the Lions in to participate and, you know, do, do joint ventures, that would be totally fine. But I just think that the rec, um, the current rec service board would, would like to stay involved and, and active in those decisions. Because like I said, things have been working well for a lot of years.
Uh, just on that topic with the Lions Club, I think Danny may have misspoke there. I just wanted to check if this is what you meant, because you said the Lions Clubs would take over, but I think the intent was or the hope was that the current rec service board, um, all the people that are on it would consider becoming members with the Lions and joining together with the Lions so that they could fall under the Lions' umbrella as far as being the host of these activities. With our affiliation policy, any affiliate has to have insurance. As a group of, um, just resident volunteers that were acting on their own, uh, they wouldn't have that insurance. As a committee of council, they would, or if they fell under the Lions Club, then they would. So council would have to decide if you'd want to keep it as a committee of council or if the preference would be that it become an outside affiliate agency, whether that be associated with the Lions Club, Bob, or whether it's affiliated with some other group. Um, I don't think that matters. It's a matter of, uh, how does council want to proceed? Is it a committee of council or is it a affiliate?
Great. Now, I guess, um, one more question I would have. If the Hawksville Rec Service Board were to remain on in some capacity, um, and this new RAC, um, the Recreation Advisory Committee were also created, would it be an option for the Chair of the Hawksville Rec Service Board, myself, to also be the representative on the newly formed RAC? And that would help have some continuity between the groups to see how, how things are working? Um, and then maybe at the end of that year term or, or longer, whatever you decide on, um, we can maybe evaluate it a little bit more comprehensively on how things are working.
Uh, thanks for that, Bobby. I, I believe that that would be, if, if council is going to approve for the Hawksville Rec Service Board to stay on for, for being another year at this point, I think that would be, uh, very valid to have the Chair of the Rec Service Board sit on the committee for that timeframe. Uh, that, again, that would give the opportunity for everybody here to know each other, know how each community, uh, works. Uh, so I think that would be a, that would be an opportunity that we should look at. And I do want to speak to Rick's comment. Yes, that's, that was the intent of what I was saying, that, that I would, with the, the Hawksville community being in the line, the St. Clement's District Lions Club catchment area, that they would potentially join forces with them.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thanks. Uh, so I do have, I had, uh, a lot of the questions that's all posed in his, uh, letter as well. And one of my concerns was that, um, the, uh, the Paradise and District really has never had a presence in Hawksville. They may do our area, but they've never reached out in my nineteen years as councillor or my many years as Chair of Recreation. I have never heard from them, and I don't believe that they've ever assisted us in anything. So my concern with having three of those organizations and one person from each community was that I felt that Hawksville Ward One was all of a sudden maybe at a disadvantage because each of those service boards kind of represents a specific area. And Hawksville then only had one voice where the other areas had two. So that was one of my first concerns, and I felt that we should have actually two people on that to represent the Hawksville area. Maybe the, the optimists have, want to reach out now, but in past they haven't. And I think that until there's a proven track record that this is going to be an area that is completely covered by them, that Hawksville should have more representation on a board like this. And then my, my concern too was is that if the Hawksville Recreation Committee wants to continue, I would like to see them still have the same benefits of being that committee as far as when they book, uh, events, use the facilities, that type of thing. Because I don't want them to feel like they're penalized because the other community's boards couldn't keep it together. Because they have kept it together, they have represented our community very well. And our get togethers are quite enjoyable, are they not? Council Hurley, because you joined me at the very last one that you were at. So, um, I would like to see us defer this tonight and have a little bit more time to just kind of delve into all the questions that Bob has that everybody's kind of raised rather than rush into it and, uh, I, rather than rush into it and have it voted down or voted, I would like to defer it. Maybe we could all have a little bit more time and maybe Danny, you could come back with a little bit more information on some of the questions that, that Bob has. That would be my thoughts. I'd like to take, I would like a little more time to absorb it because, yeah, it's, it's a big decision. Yes?
Just on the Paradise and District Lions Club, um, we do meet with them on a regular basis now to talk about common interests and things like that. And they have indicated that they are very interested in getting volunteers from the Hawksville area and expanding their coverage area to Hawksville. So, um, if there is any interest in that, then, um, Brian Cunningham is the contact that, that would be either reach out to the service board or to you, Council Wagner, or we can give you their contact as well.
Bob, you're open to that? You, even you and I could, uh, meet in front?
Yeah, certainly. Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to speak with whoever wants to get involved in our community. That, that's great.
I can arrange that, uh, that contact.
Okay. Um, so I don't know how, whether I call a vote and we, and you vote or whether we could go ahead and agree to defer it, uh, to get some additional information. I, yeah, sorry, Councilor.
We do have a second motion, uh, that we could, we could, and I would move that one. And that one has to deal with, um, just having the, um, Hawksville, uh, group stay as they are for a year. And the reason I don't have a problem with that is because after a year, it's still council's decision to evaluate how that has worked out and then make, uh, make adjustments at that point. Um, at least this gives some structure to, um, like the process of, of collaborating together. And, um, so I, I would move that if there's a secondary. I, I don't know that there's, if I can just go, I don't know that there's a need to defer at this point. I can understand your rationale for that, but, uh, I think the, the Three Lions Clubs have, have all, or two of them, I think, have, have sent their endorsement to this program. So I think it's just a matter of how we're going to fit Hawksville into the program. And I think that the one-year referral or the one-year, you know what I'm saying? Would make, uh, would make a lot of sense at this point. And, and there's going to be a lot of collaboration going on between them. I think Bob has indicated a willingness to do that, and you've indicated a willingness to do that. So, um, this could work out to be something fantastic, yeah, if, if collaboration, um, works well.
Okay, I'm going to begin now, therefore be resolved. Okay. So now, therefore be resolved that the Council of the Township of Wellesley hereby approve the disbandment of the existing recreation service boards and the establishment of a Recreation Advisory Committee with the scope and structure as outlined in the staff report. And further, that the Hawksville Recreation Service Board be permitted to continue in its current capacity until December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six, to continue hosting community events in Hawksville with free rental, limited to the events hosted in two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five, with no additional events offered without council approval. And further, that any funds currently held in Recreation Service Board accounts remain in the accounts they are presently in to be utilized exclusively for recreation purposes within their respective communities.
Can, it can be something in there that, um, the Chair of, uh, the Recreation Chair in Hawksville sit as an additional member along with the Ward, another Ward One resident? Council Hurley.
So what happens after a year? They don't get their free rental for their fundraising events?
So the way the motion would read right now is that they would fall under, um, the clause where they would be disbanded after December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six.
Without reevaluation?
Well, council would have the opportunity to reevaluate.
And may I add that?
Yeah, we have that added.
Can you add that, add it into the?
Yeah.
Can we also discuss the, um, recommendation by Council Wagner of the two members before we read the recommendation again?
So that just be through the one-year term, that they still exist as they are and then it'd be renegotiated essentially at the end of that one-year term?
That would be my thought, yes.
Oh, okay.
Right, because everything would get reevaluated at the one-year mark anyways?
Yes.
And so at that one-year mark, if we, if there's still, if this council still feels there's a need for two voices being represented from Ward One, the Hawksville area, then we would continue that, even though maybe the board decides they're not going to continue and that the, that the new structure still works? Yes. Is that, everybody can, okay?
Just as our kind of one additional member was it until December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six?
Until this is reevaluated, yes.
Confused. You got another recommendation to reevaluate that Director Recreation bring a report back before the end of the two thousand and twenty-six to re, to allow council to reevaluate?
Yeah, uh, thanks. If we could add in that that be brought back at the, in the recommendation, the Chair of the committee would report to council at the December committee meeting. If we could add that that's when that, with reevaluation would happen.
Bob, did you have another question?
Yeah, my, my only concern with that is if it goes to review next December, um, and then ultimately the decision is made to disband, would Hawksville then lose its seat on the new RAC? And if the Ward One, um, representative is not from Hawksville, then that would, that would essentially eliminate all representation of any kind from Hawksville. That, that might be a step backwards unless I'm misinterpreting that.
Primarily, the Ward One representative would be still from the, the Hawksville area, because the, the Ward One outlining area has a lot of, um, a lot of our Minnetonka partners, and they don't involve themselves. So I, I can't see somebody from outside of Hawksville or Ward One. Like Ward One would have, somebody there would have to have that seat. That's my assumption. Is that correct, Danny?
That is correct, yes. And, uh, it would also be a new council then, uh, that's making the decision after year one of this. And again, the intent would be that this committee sits for a year and, and they hear all of the, all of the interest from all the communities. And it may well be that, that, that the Lions Club and the, and the Hawksville Rec Service Board, uh, get together and can make things work. So I, I don't, I wouldn't want to pigeonhole us on anything right now, so I like the idea of adding this for one year and reevaluating in December of next year. That keeps all options on the table.
Just with the new council coming in, I'm going to make a recommendation to add one step to that. Let an interim report be brought in. Is there an October committee meeting or is it?
There. There would be an October council meeting, but.
That would be early in October, that would be the last meeting of this council.
There would be an October sixth council meeting, uh, the last meeting of this council would be November tenth.
Okay. So I'd recommend then we bring a interim report to that October sixth meeting so that current council can discuss it and get their input on the table and then wait for the December committee meeting to bring back any final recommendations so that the new council can have a look at it.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Bob.
Okay, I'm going to read the recommendation one more time.
Thank you.
Uh, I'm going to begin at, um, for the recommendation as revised. So and further, that the Hawksville Recreation Service Board be permitted to continue in its current capacity until December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six, to continue hosting community events in Hawksville with free rental, limited to events hosted in two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five, with no additional events offered without council approval. And further, that the Hawksville Recreation Service Board Chair sit as a member of the Recreation Advisory Committee in addition to the Ward One resident member for the extended service board term. in addition to the Ward One resident member for the extended service board term. And further, that the Director of Recreation provide council an interim report at the October 6th, 2026 council meeting. And the Director of Recreation and Chair of the Hawksville Recreation Service Board provide a report to council at the December 26th, the December 2026 council meeting.
Meeting.
No, it's a council meeting.
Council meeting in December, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, do you, do you need this mover and secondary to?
So Bear Noack is the mover and Councilor Brick is the secondary. So if you are agreeable to the amendments?
One more question, one back for Rec Boarding. How will these people be, um, how are you going to find the people to come forward to be on the committee?
Thanks, Councilor. It is outlined in the report how that process does work, that, that would, that process would start, I believe, in October. Uh, we would advertise it in local papers and, uh, through our social media, uh, through the township.
Thank you.
So just to say, I'm not, similarly to any other, um, committee or board of council, the term would run concurrent with the term of council.
Any other discussion? Um, so I guess it would be, uh, the recommendation, um, as per the revised, revised recommendation? Be approved as?
Did you want me to repeat the name?
Maybe one more time, yes.
Okay. Whereas the Recreation Service Boards of the Township of Wellesley have made significant contributions to the delivery of recreation programs and services in their communities over many years. And whereas only one Recreation Service Board remains active, with another currently inactive, and the other boards and committees unofficially disbanding. And whereas the township has identified the need for a more coordinated and strategic approach to recreation planning and delivery across all communities. And whereas the establishment of a Recreation Advisory Committee will provide consistent advice to council, enhance public input, and ensure recreation services are aligned with the township's strategic priorities. And whereas the local Lions Clubs have expressed support for the establishment of such a committee. And whereas the township recognizes and respects the importance of maintaining existing Recreation Service Board funds with their respective accounts to be utilized for recreation purposes within their communities. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the Township of Wellesley hereby approve the disbandment of existing Recreation Service Boards and the establishment of a Recreation Advisory Committee with the scope and structure as detailed in the staff report. And further, that the Hawksville Recreation Service Board be permitted to continue in its current capacity until December 31st, 2026, to continue hosting community events in, uh, within Hawksville. Community events in Hawksville with free rental, limited to events hosted in 2024, 2025, with no additional events offered without council approval. And further, that the Hawksville Recreation Service Board Chair sit as a member of the Recreation Advisory Committee in addition to the Ward One resident member for the extended service board term. And further, that the Director of Recreation provide council an interim report at the October 6th, 2026 council meeting. And the Director of Recreation and Chair of the Hawksville Recreation Service Board provide a report to council at the December 2026 council meeting. And further, that any funds currently held in Recreation Service Board accounts remain in the accounts they are presently in to be utilized exclusively for recreation purposes within their respective communities.
Thank you. Okay, I will concur. All in favor of the amended recommendation? Carrie Guinanis, thank you. One more. Rec 11, 2025, Wellesley Apple Jacks Game Streaming Motion Required Recommendation. Whereas the Provincial Junior Hockey League has a game streaming agreement with NBC Sports Engine. And whereas the Wellesley Apple Jacks have an agreement with the PJHL to stream their hockey games. And whereas an agreement between the Wellesley Apple Jacks and the Township of Wellesley is required prior to the installation of a permanent camera in township facilities. Therefore, be it resolved that the Council of the Township of Wellesley authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement with the Wellesley Apple Jacks pending the legal review. And further, that council direct staff to obtain the legal review with all associated costs to be covered by the Wellesley Apple Jacks. Do I have a mover? Moved by Councilor Brick. I can invite Councilor Hergit. Discussion? Councilor?
Just one question on this, and maybe it's a little bit off topic, but I know the Hurricanes and the Stars, we're looking for something similar, and I think this is separate, but maybe Danny,
Yeah, so the difference between this, uh, request and the Hurricanes and the Stars is this is a permanent camera in the facility. The Hurricanes and the Stars are using a, uh, a stream through CBC Sports. And they don't, their games aren't live streamed. They bring their camera in, record the game, and then the camera leaves the facility. So there's no concern about streaming happening outside of the scheduled events. This, uh, this here is a request for a permanent camera that's only to be streaming during pre, uh, pre-scheduled events. And, uh, like I said in the report, there had to be some changes to this in respect to what happened in some neighboring communities this summer, uh, with some unauthorized streaming happening in their, in the facilities. And that was why this, the changes were made to this, and, uh, the report is the way you see it now.
Um, does the Director of Recreation have a report you want to bring forward?
Thank you. And, yeah, so the, with the Jax having their league signing an agreement with Sports Engine, uh, the Apple Jax are required to adhere to that, uh, contract. So the team, so an agreement is, uh, between the township and the Jax has to happen for the camera to be permanently installed in their facility. Uh, like I just said to Councilor Brick, this has to do with some, an incident that happened in neighboring communities where streaming was happening, happening outside of scheduled events. So the patrons in the community centers didn't know they were being recorded, and this was being streamed over the internet. So that's why we had to put in, uh, some protection clauses into this agreement that permitted township staff to be able to shut down the stream if there's any, uh, if there was any breach. So, uh, Bob's still on the call. Bob and I have worked together on, on this agreement, uh, over the past several months. So I believe we've captured everything now that needs to be captured. So now, uh, with council's approval, we'll send this off for a legal review because, uh, it's staff, this council most staff are not lawyers. So the best thing to do is get a legal opinion on this before signing the agreement.
Thank you. Uh, are there any further questions? I just have, uh, one. Um, is this new? I, I don't remember cameras being old enough.
This is new.
This is? Brand new.
This is brand new. This is, this is not just a Wellesley Township, uh, thing. This is happening in arenas across Ontario, across Canada. Uh, it's a big thing to be able to record the games. So grandparents at home, parents at home can watch the games as they happen. But, uh, then the, the issue becomes is the streaming in the facilities. And so that's what this agreement is all about.
Okay, thank you. Um, Bob, did you have a question?
I did, yeah. So the legal review, Danny, do you have any idea how long that may take? I ask because obviously our regular season has now started, so it'd be good to expedite this as much as we can.
Actually, Bob, I'll take that question and, uh, I'm sure you know with lawyers, it's very, very hard to pinpoint a time. But we will ask for an expedited review, and, uh, I would imagine we should be able to get that in fairly short order.
Okay, very good. Thanks.
Uh, just Councilor, any other question? Okay, so now I will concur. All in favor of the recommendation? Carrie Guinanis. And that is it for me.
I just wanted to say thank you again, everybody. I'm going to log off shortly. I do have another meeting I have to jump over to unless you guys need me for anything further. Okay, thank you again.
Thanks, Bob. I'm on Director Update.
I will keep this short and sweet. The ICE is in in both facilities with last night being the first night of ICE in St. Clement's. Uh, facility staff continue to work indoors and outdoor parks, maintaining the fall dimes and cutting grass because that hasn't stopped yet. Uh, and now with this nice weather we're getting now, the grass continues to grow. Uh, and fall programming has begun and our program, with more programs beginning in early October. That's all I have for today.
Thank you. That's it, Director.
Okay, planning and development, is there a staff review?
Nope. The Director's update, Director of Recreation, hoping to question.
With, with Councilor Hergit.
I know what you want to say. So every, uh, every month or two, I get asked about, um, a zoning application that's been posted somewhere in the community. And I have to just go on the website and find it or call you and ask, is there a way that we could be informed on this somehow? Um, like you have a group email that you send to staff or something that we could be included on?
Like, so do you mean when that, that somebody's applied for a zoning bylaw amendment, like a public?
Yes. When they get posted at the property, then someone will see it and then call me and ask, hey, what's going on over there?
Right. Um, so we also post it on our website, like we post the notice for the meeting, which also includes, so that goes on our website under news and notices. Um, and in that notice, it gives kind of a description of what uh, it is going on, for like, you know, a brief summary of what they're asking for. Um, are you asking for, for more than that or?
No, just that, that could be sent. Like, if there would be some form of a package that could just be sent.
To council?
Yes. It's just an email that we get.
Yeah. I, I don't see why, no, I don't think there's anything. Was that, sorry?
Public information.
Yeah, it's a, it's a public application.
Yeah.
I think, um, just further to that, like in a perfect world, something we're working on with our GIS system is, um, and again, when I say working on it, I don't, I don't mean we're acting actively working on it now, but it's, it's an action item that we'd like to do. Um, is eventually at one point, you have a GIS map, um, on the website that shows all active applications, uh, the current status, whether it's, uh, been applied for, under review, been approved. Uh, and that would, I think, be a really, really big win for, for the township if we could have all that up on the people can go search and see what's going on in the township. So that's something long-term, I would say long-term, medium-term that we're, we're going to be doing. But for the time being, for sure, I can, I can send that through an email to the Mayor Council.
So along that map, would you be able to click on it and then see all the information for that?
Right. Yeah, that's the idea. So, um, you know what it's all about. Even you can append, um, as part of our GIS system, you can append, excuse me, reports. Um, so any of the, you know, if there was any supporting studies or reports that were, um, submitted with that application, you could, you could refer to those somewhere on the website. I mean, the old website, we had a current planning application area on the website, but we, we normally just use that for larger applications, subdivisions, uh, you know, larger zone changes or something like that, but never, you know, to the extent of minor variances or consents or anything like that. So.
Good, thank you.
Is it just, is it any planning application? Is it zone change? Like, what kind, um?
Basically, the ones that generally the, um, the minor variances that get posted.
Okay. Okay, so we can, we can circulate, um, I guess, any, really any planning application that has a public process attached to it?
Yeah, I'm thinking, do we just, uh, circulate the notice? Copy of the notice that goes on the signs, and the council has that information at their hand.
Sure, yeah. Yeah, for sure. Thank you. Okay. No, I had, I had a Director's update, sorry. No, no, I, I, I didn't have, I shook my head no, I don't have any reports this evening.
Oh, okay. Would the Director like to bring an update?
I, I would love to bring an update. Thank you very much.
Okay, road and bridge? He's got one.
Oh, he's got one? I, you said, no, I just, I just scouted you right there.
I'm here, uh, electric council, so I'll do whatever I can. Just a short, uh, short update. So our official plan review, as you know, is underway. We're in stage two of our work. Um, which includes preparation of our background studies on things like population forecasts, our land needs assessment and others. Also included this, in this stage is, um, um, setting up initial contact with indigenous communities and the regulatory agencies that we'll be working with as we work through our draft OP, engage with them in the process. And looking ahead to October, we will be bringing these draft studies to council, um, for an early look as a draft, and then in the public, to the public later in October for some engagement on some of the research we've, um, been putting together. Um, and secondly, we're, we're also working with our consulting team, um, to put together all the feedback that we've received with respect to the former Wellesley Arena and Community Center lands. We've gathered quite a bit of input over the summer. And, um, we're, we're bringing, we're planning on bringing this back, uh, to council this fall along with some proposed next steps. So that works underway and, um, we're looking forward to the outcome of it. That's it for tonight. Thank you. Councilor Brick?
Any questions from the Director? Ignored. Go on now, we're road and bridge.
Thank you. Uh, Director?
Yes, thank you, Councilor Hergit. Um, so I do have several items today. So, number one, the tree giveaway is scheduled for October 18th and 25th. Uh, two consecutive Saturdays again, just as we've done in the last couple of years. It's been very successful. There will be 1200 trees given away over the two days, again, just like we have for the last three years. We're also doing the, uh, electronics recycling, again, as that was well-attended last year. So at the same time, you can pick up a tree, you can drop off any old, uh, electronics recycling you may have at home. Um, number two, Queens Bush Road is ready to be paved. If you've driven that area, you know the manholes, it's all been milled down. The manholes are, uh, raised. Everything's ready to go. We anticipate, uh, I was talking to the contractor today, anticipate paving of that the week of, uh, one day, the week of September 29th. The exact day has not been, it'll be weather dependent. Um, there's several other construction projects that are, uh, being wrapped up or are, are going to be started soon. The Metline pulverizing repaving, the final block of that. We have that in October, along with the remainder of our asphalt paving, uh, tender that was put out in the spring. The Posy Line color replacement is now complete. We're just looking at bar grill installation that went, uh, ahead of schedule. So it went really, really well. Uh, as you heard earlier, the transportation mobility master plan is, uh, well underway with, we received some great feedback from the public, uh, as well as council, um, with our surveys and with our engagement, uh, at the Fall Fair. Our aggregate yard that we implemented this year, a year in St. Clement's is now up and running. It's gated, locked. Uh, the berm is, uh, installed and we've been using it, and it's already proven to be an asset to the operation and hopefully will continue to be for years. Uh, and the Overhead Beacon is now installed as of Friday at the intersection of Hessens Strauss, Maplewood and Hergit. So that's a two-way stop, so it's two-way red and two-way amber. Um, so there's been a lot of positive comments on that already as well. Uh, and then finally, sorry to say it, but we're gearing up for winter as well. So as far as the fleet and materials and things like that, we're starting to get ready for, for winter. So, uh, like many other departments, there's, there's a lot going on about the works at the moment. That's all I have for today.
Any questions for the Director? I have one. Does the electric, electronic, um, recycling include batteries?
Uh, yes, there will be, uh, batteries.
Thank you.
Operator?
Thanks, Bear Noack. Uh, we have no staff reports, so would Chief Redden like to give a report?
Yeah, a few quick things, um, coming back after summer. Uh, Friday, October the 3rd, uh, we start our, the International Fire Prevention Week. And we are having our yearly fire open house. It will be at Station Two in St. Clement's this year. It'll be at Friday, 5:30 to 8:30, um, usual. Usual type of thing. We'll have a truck, go see some equipment. I believe we usually do some type of demonstration. We have a little barbecue going on. So we have that on that night. We did a movie night September 5th. And by all accounts, it sounded like it was great. It was a grant, but it was sort of fire-led. And I believe the initial discussion is that if we thought it was successful, we may follow up on that. By all accounts, what I heard is it was a great turnout. And we incorporated some, some fire prevention into that and went really, really well. Good turnout. We do have a current recruitment on, closing on September 26th. Right now, I'm sure we have a few people on deck that we know, we found out recently, we're moving out of township and that sort of thing. So we'll be looking at probably a small, very small hire this year. But that's currently going and we've had that posted for a couple of days and we probably fielded nine applications just today. So we're happy to see that. Something we've done this year is there's an organization called the Fire Service Women of Ontario, FS, FSWO. And we have, as a, as a department, we have purchased a group membership, all of our female firefighters. And they do a, well, they have lots of courses and lots of offerings over the course of the year. Their mission statement is, is to encourage, educate and empower women in the fire service in Ontario. So any of our female firefighters automatically have a membership to that, to the group township. And they do a yearly training event at different places. It's a two or three day training. So we have four of our female firefighters going down the October, to Oakville, October 23rd and 24th, state departments and all that. So we're excited to have that onboard. And our firefight team, we had a couple of years where it was pretty quiet going back there when I first came here. Nine years ago, they were very active, then it kind of got quiet. And then we've had a resurgence of people coming in in the last four and five years. And they were down in Oshwa in August, and they did very well. If you've seen this edition of the Wellwich Observer, there's a good article on that, giving the team some, some good press there. And I believe one of the members this past weekend, they, they went up to Ottawa, but only one of the members went up. Forwarded on, I believe one of our members, 753, went up there. Michael Schultz went up, I think, but I haven't heard how he did. So yeah, that's it. That's, that's what we've done this summer. Thanks.
Thanks, Chief Redden. Any questions? Okay, that's it for me.
Excuse me. So we'll go to Edman and Finance, AFNP 26, 2025. Recommendation that the Council of the Township of Wellesley adopt the pregnancy and parental leave for members of council, personal policy number 33-25. Can I move on to that, please? Against Wagner, seven. Are we going to speak to this?
Okay, so to comply with changes to the Nurseful Act, nurse policies are required to have a policy pertaining to pregnancy and parental leave for members of council. This policy requirement was introduced at a similar timeline to the council staff relationship policy that council approved earlier this year. The policy just provides a formal procedure for members of council taking pregnancy or parental leave similar to the regulations identified eventually or federally.
Questions?
If someone goes on leave, will they be replaced for that time or will it just be vacant?
I know the seat will be vacant and it's up to the council member if they wish to continue to attend meetings. But if they take a leave, they would be, they would just be a house seat. Except for from committees of council. So if you sat on a committee in that place, that seat. No, that seat will continue to be vacant, sorry.
Gotcha.
I read the committee part, it's the, if it stayed vacant for, thank you.
Any questions? All question, all in favor? And that's Carrie Ginnandis. AFNP 27, 2025. The recommendation, the Council of Township of Wellesley approve the 2026 council meeting schedule as presented in report AFNP 27, 2025. Moved by Council Seven, second by Council Wagner. And we'll bring that one to you.
Okay, annually staff propose the council calendar for the following year, with 2026 being an election year. The fall schedule is slightly adjusted to limit meetings during the election period, which typically falls 10 days prior to election day. The last meeting of the current council would fall on Tuesday, November 10th, and the first meeting of the new term of council would be Tuesday, November 17th. Noted on the calendar are conferences, election dates, council orientation date and budget meetings. Just to provide as much notice as possible for counselors and potential election candidates.
And any questions with regard to the schedule? Call a question, all in favor? That's Carrie. AFNP 28, 2025. Council of Township of Wellesley approve partnership with the Wellesley District Lions Club whereby the township provides event space for up to four youth dances per year at the Township Wellesley Recreation Complex organized and hosted by the Wellesley Industry Lions Club. Can I move on to that, please? Council Brick, second by Council Herget, and our CEO, we're going to take that over.
Thanks, Mayor Noir. Yeah, the Lions Club did approach us to see if we could enter into a partnership with them. They have come to council in the past asking for free rentals for the youth dances. In, in their opinion, which I strongly agree with, these youth dances have been very positive for the community. And they're very well attended by the youth of the community. So they would like to continue offering those. And in order to keep that cost low, the rental of the facility would make that difficult. So if we could offer the free rentals by partnering, I think that's very good use of township facilities for community building.
Any questions?
I have one, just so. I think this is good, a good collaboration with the Lions Club, no question. But other Lions Clubs, would there be a possibility for, say, to have a dance in St. Clement's? Absolutely, there would be. And the recommendation would be the exact same. Exact same thing, yeah. Or so Linwood, I guess. Yep, Linwood or Paradise District Lions, either one could propose to do it in the other settlements. And I would highly recommend that the council would approve that as well. So that's, that's a good step forward, I think.
Any other questions? All in favor then? Carrie? AFNP 29, 2025. Recommendation, the Council of Township Wellesley authorize the CEO to execute a memorandum of understanding with Wellwich Community Health Center and an additional reasonable and any additional reasonable approvals required to provide opportunity to design a medical facility to be added to the Linwood Community Center as outlined in this report and the attached MOU. Can I move on to that, please? Council Seven, second by Council Wagner. And that's true, it's my, I'll bring that one over.
So this one's a very good news story, I think, for the township and for the residents. This, we've been in discussions for quite some time now, starting, I think it was back in the early spring with Wellwich Community Health Center, that they would like to basically duplicate the Wellesley facility on a smaller scale up in Linwood. And this would replace the current nurse practitioner office up there. By partnering with the township to provide the land, the provincial government looks favorably on that. And they don't give capital funding, but they'll give additional operating funding to make this happen. And the health center has reported that they could construct this, cover all the capital costs. And then we'd enter into a lease agreement similar to what we have down in Wellesley whereby the lease payments would then cover future maintenance and future replacement costs as well. So there'd be no top, no cost to the taxpayer. And it would provide a excellent service for the community. And they also found that having it attached to the recreation facility was very useful in treating patients because now they have areas for physical activity while they're doing those treatments as well. So with council's blessing, the health center would carry on with getting design work done after we enter this MOU.
Okay, questions? Questions, seven?
So Rick, I, as I was reading it, I can't remember the number, but it said it would expand over to the east. How will that work with the right of way or the mainway that's over there?
Yeah, actually the dimensions wouldn't change that laneway. It would fit in that grass area that's currently there. So originally, when the library was built, that was slated as an area for a gazebo or something like that. So there is a door and windows on that east wall that would have to get relocated. Then that would eliminate the possibility of ever having a gazebo in that spot, but we do have other property there that that could move. So that access room would stay either exactly where it is or if it did need to be moved, it would be buried very slightly.
I was just concerned with the with the multi-use pad back there and, and even the back diamonds and stuff like that, that people can access them, but.
Yeah, no, that would be fully accessible.
Yep, thank you.
Any other questions? Council Herget?
Two questions. Is there a timeline? And will there be a fundraising campaign?
Very good questions. So in a perfect world, construction would start this fall still. The township has submitted a, an application to administrative environment for the septic system on that property. We, we're already in the midst of that anyhow with the current system that's there not functioning quite properly. So this would actually get rid of the tertiary treatment system, make it a normal septic system, but it would be a dosed system. Because it's not, it's not every day that we get high volumes of water in there. It's very sporadic. So we've issued that or submitted that application already, asked for an expedited review on that as well. And if all goes well and the health center can get their design drawings done, there's possibility of starting at this fall still. There would be fundraising done by the health center. It won't be done by the township, at least not currently. But yes, they are looking for fundraising on this.
Great, thank you. There was one group that had asked about donations or making a donation possibly.
Wonderful, yeah. We can connect them with, with Ben Ash.
If you send me an email, I can forward it.
Okay.
Any other questions? My understanding, Rick, the existing nurse practitioner's office was just nurse practitioner.
That's correct.
But with this new facility, my understanding in talking with Ben, that they will, they will be able to have a doctor on part-time at that facility as well. So that's a huge improvement to the services that, that that community is going to get.
That's correct.
Am I correct on that?
You are.
All good news.
It is.
Let me, did I call a question? All in favor? Carrie? Director's update? Director's not here. Jeff, give me.
Director's not here.
Okay, I don't mind if you want to. No, okay. Oh, that's on that. So information package, I don't think anyone's brought forward. Unfinished business, none, as I can see. Next meeting, September 30th. Council meeting, September 30th. Committee of all meeting, October 14th. Council meeting, October 28th. Council Wagner, do you have something to say at this point? Motion to adjourn. All in favor? Carrie?